progress.
Councilwoman Foreman. Councilwoman Foreman.
Present.
Councilwoman Grant.
Here.
Councilwoman Harland.
Here.
Councilman Redcorn.
Here.
Second Chair Red Eagle.
Here.
Councilman Rebar. Chairman Waller. We have a forum.
Thank you, Lacy. First, next on the agenda is the superintendent report. Superintendent Phillips, are you here?
Uh, yes, I was, uh, was that number two, three, eight, eight? And apparently I couldn't, I pushed, kept pushing a button, but yeah. I don't know. It's just part of, uh, the world we live in today. But good morning.
Morning.
Um, the superintendent's report, let me put my glasses on, I do apologize, for aggregates, AIPAC produced twenty-two thousand forty-six point thirty-two tons and paid a royalty of twenty-three thousand two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents. Candy Creek Crusher produced twenty-seven thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars and, oh, pardon me, twenty-seven thousand one hundred and twenty-four point six-four tons and paid twenty-three thousand nine hundred and twenty-six point oh-six in royalty. Barback Materials produced thirteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-three point ninety-six tons and paid fourteen thousand three hundred and fifty-one point ninety-eight in royalty. Schmidt Brothers produced one hundred and twelve cubic yards and paid eighty-four dollars in royalty. We have fourteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-two producing wells, which three thousand two hundred and thirty of those are identified as saltwater disposal wells. During the month, last month, we approved three workover permits, nine plugging permits, two emergency plugging permits, and five drilling permits. Um, I provided to the O N C and the Osage Nation copies of those leases that were approved under two fourteen. Also, I provided a response that we received from the Oklahoma Tax Commission on twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one gross production tax. So those have been delivered to the, um, Osage Minerals Council. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Yes, I'll have mine queued up.
Councilwoman Foreman.
Thank you. Um, I noticed we have five drilling permits. That's the first time I've seen that in a while. That's good. Uh, but we haven't had a completion report. You can have a whole bunch of per- approved drilling permits, but people can change their mind about drilling depending on the conditions out there and investments and that sort of thing. Uh, but it's good that we've, uh, we've got five approved. Um, you know, we're six thousand barrels down from when you started, uh, Superintendent Phillips. If you take out the, um, Burbank field, which has been a great success for us, if it weren't for that, we'd really be in dire straits. I need to know from you, uh, what you are doing to expedite permitting, uh, to get more wells drilled. I'd also like to know how many rigs are out there drilling right now, if any. Um, and what we need to do to, uh, uh, start, um, you know, increasing our volumes again. Uh, you know, the, we've, uh, seen the oil price go up above a hundred dollars now, and we're still in the same shape we were in several years ago. So I need to hear from you what your plan is.
Um, the Osage Agency, when we issue drilling permits, um, those drilling permits are good for two years. So the lessee has the ability to drill within the two-year period. I can't actually go out there and put a ninety-day, you need to drill within ninety days. I think that would actually hurt the, um, um, the approval of the drilling permit. So I can't really speak to the effect of what I'm doing other than, you know, issuing drilling permits, processing drilling permits through the agency. Um, as far as, uh, rigs drilling, the regulations basically inform the lessee that once we issue a drilling permit, under twenty-five CFR two-two-six, they are supposed to provide the agency with notification of the date that they're going to drill. I can ask my petroleum engineer if he can provide me with some dates and who has submitted those dates that they propose to drill in the near future.
Well, actually, that's not what I'm asking. Uh, you know, I wouldn't expect, nor would anyone else, you to, to put a date on when somebody has to drill. That's their prerogative. You know, you've got to approve the drilling permits, but we also have to do things behind the scenes to promote the mineral estate. Um, and I might just emphasize, six thousand barrels down since twenty-fourteen, when you started, uh, is not a good record. It also reflects at a hundred dollars, uh, a barrel, six gross, gross revenue of six hundred thousand dollars a day in losses to the mineral estate. The royalty owner, uh, portion of that is devastating. Somebody, uh, we were, uh, putting a pencil to it the other day, and that's, that represents fifteen thousand dollars a year, uh, per head mic. Uh, I think your responsibility, um, extends beyond just approving drilling permits. I would like to see better, um, planning and promotion of the mineral estate because we still have a rich, um, source of, um, many millions of barrels of oil that can be exported and produced in an sustainable, uh, in a renewable way. And, um, you know, it, it just doesn't hurt to remind everyone that we've had that plane crash already that, uh, Councilmember Redcorn referred to in the last council when we got the, um, uh, report from the D E M B showing that if we keep heading in this direction, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna go out of business. That's what's happened. You know, people aren't coming here. Oh, you know, we've got a few folks that have concessions, and that's what these five permits are that are obligated to drill. But we don't have any new drilling. We don't have any interest in the mineral estate. And we need to figure out what the problem is and what we can do, what B I A can do as well as the O M C, to do a better job of promoting our mineral estate. And I don't expect any answers today, but I do want to emphasize the great cost to us and to our shareholders of, of not doing anything to promote the mineral estate. And, um, you know, and the, and the extreme dire need to do so. And, and I also might add that the O M C has been doing many, many things behind the scenes to try to figure out new ways to develop in the, in the, in this twenty-first century, uh, great energy transition that we're in. And we're coming up with some really good ideas. I hope that, uh, and we'll be letting you know that, I'm sure, at some point in time. But I hope that, uh, that the B I A will, will do something in that regard. That's all I have to say.
Manager Juan. The Osage Agency, um, is working with the O M C and trying to have lease sales. We have a lease sale then scheduled, I think, what, in September? But at the last, uh, Osage Minerals Council, there were four, I believe, negotiated leases. So when we negotiate leases and then we have a lease sale or try to have a lease sale, I think that what I would recommend to the O M C is that as we get closer to these lease sales, that maybe at that point you might consider, um, advising those individuals to, you know, recommend that for the next oil and gas lease sale. If by chance we're gonna have good lease sales, then we need to do something to where our lessies are submitting those requests to the Osage Agency for the lease sale. Who knows how many other people may be interested in leasing that tract of land? I don't know. But, uh, you know, that would, that would encourage everyone to have, go through the agency, and we would have a bigger lease out. So right now, at this point, I don't know exactly how many nominated leases have been submitted to the agency, but, um, that's one of the things that I would encourage the O M C to do, uh, just so that we could see if we could get into a possibility of, you know, individuals that maybe come in and have an interest in that tract of land as well, and goes into more of a, you know, bidding process. That's my recommendation to the O M C.
Uh, Mr. Winlock.
Yes, I was just gonna relay a bit that, uh, there is one well being drilled in Osage County, and it's spotted in on the four thirteen, the twenty-two. And it's, uh, four D three, uh, drilling a well. It is the Carter Well.
Thank you, Richard. Councilmember Foreman.
Uh, thank you, Richard. I appreciate that. I, I had asked that question. Um, I have a few recommendations for the B I A. And perhaps the other council people will also, uh, have recommendations for the lease sale. Um, posting it on the website is not enough, as you know. It needs to be advertised. Uh, last time, uh, we were told that the B I A did not have the five or seven hundred dollars it took to advertise in OK Energy Today in their budget. I would recommend to you that you, uh, that you, and hopefully you've already started this, to figure out where to come up with the money to, uh, have a proper advertising of our lease sales. I would also, and, and I'd start now if you haven't already for the September one. Um, I would also recommend that you look at why we're not getting, um, and advertising is one of them, but what are the real reasons we're not getting interest in our lease sales? And I would, uh, offer to you, and I think everybody knows that, doing business in Osage is toxic. You can't get a drilling permit, uh, approved in any reasonable amount of time. There are so many regulations and penalties that, uh, are assessed on a regular basis to our current producers that, you know, they can't drill more wells. They, uh, you know, the bonding issue is, is so toxic that, uh, banks won't, won't give bonds anymore. Um, you know, there are many, many extenuating, uh, circumstances that cause doing business in Osage not to be, um, desirable. And I would recommend to the B I A that they look at those very closely and start figuring out, you know, how they can improve the business environment in Osage County to encourage people to come back. Thank you.
There's no more hands up.
Is that all the hands up?
That's all.
Uh, in my haste, earlier on the agenda, I, I missed the item where it says, uh, open a prayer. I haven't done this in quite a while, so I, I, I ask you, ask you to forgive me a minute. I, I'd like to ask the Councilwoman Foreman to render a prayer at this time, if you don't mind.
Chairman.
Thank you, Second Chair Red Eagle. Uh, I will, in the Father, Son, Holy Spirit, the men. Um, precious Lord, we come before you today in praise and thanksgiving for the many blessings you've bestowed on our tribe and our people. We ask that you guide us in all of our decision-making endeavors to make the right decisions with your guidance. We pray for peace in Ukraine and the world. We pray for all our people who are sick or suffering or have lost loved ones. And we pray for the, uh, renewal of our mineral estate so that, um, you know, we can, we can go about the business that we are responsible for doing to, uh, increase our production, to, uh, make it a thriving, friendly business environment again. Um, in Jesus' name we pray, in the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Thank you, Councilwoman Foreman.
Chairman.
Second Chair. Lost a Osage member just recently. His name was Demar Inyer, or just, excuse me, Demar Rennie, Demar Rennie. And he was an Osage man, a little younger than I was. He, he was a good man. We lost him. That's another member that's gone. Okay, on the next item.
Chair, Chair, Second Chair, can you hear me? Second Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
We have a list of deceased Osage Indians. Would you like for someone to read that?
Yes, go ahead, go right ahead.
Okay. I just want to make sure if you want to cover that as well. Sorry. Okay.
You got the list.
Can you hear?
Go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me? Is this working? It's not working. Okay, okay. I'll, you kind of increased my voice volume. If that's okay, I'll read them. List of deceased Osage Indians for March two thousand and twenty-two. John E. Gilbert, Wichita, Kansas. Kenneth Perrier. Place unknown. Allison D. Sturgeon, Indianapolis, Indiana. Billy J. Myers. Location unknown. Raven T. Callshim. Location unknown. Tom J. H. Bass. John Perrier. Of Mahuska, Oklahoma. Dolores Barnett. Of Oklahoma City, Oklahoma. Lila Sparks. Of Tulsa, Oklahoma. Edward Fletcher. Of Tulsa, Oklahoma. Ruby Bishop. Of New Mexico. Joanne Myers. Of Spokane, Washington. Josephine Willie. Of Fairfax, Oklahoma. Ellen Mae Thomason. Of Fairfax, Oklahoma. John G. Tallchief. Of Bartlesville, Oklahoma. Thank you, Second Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Redcorn. Uh, just like I was stating, uh, may they rest in peace. Just as I was stating, uh, new business, uh, there's been a request to go into, uh, uh, executive session. Is, Lacy, is Raleigh Wilson on the line?
No.
Uh, can, may I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Second Chair, uh, Red Eagle, I was wanting to request, if it's okay with Councilmember, uh, Redcorn, uh, we were going to have our, um, consulting attorney, uh, Raleigh Wilson in our executive disse- uh, session to discuss one of the items. And he has, uh, he has an appointment at twelve-thirty, so I was gonna see if it was okay if we discussed, had that item pushed up to the first item in executive before we go in, if that's okay with Councilmember Redcorn.
Uh, I have no problem with that request.
Okay, thank you.
I don't.
Obviously, we'll need to get, um, uh, when we go into executive, we'll need to get, uh, Mr. Wilson. We'll have to admit him to the meeting when he logs in.
So he's, uh, Councilman, uh, Councilwoman Foreman, he's not here right now.
Is it time to go into executive?
Not yet, uh, but, uh.
Okay.
Is Raleigh Wilson with us now?
No, I'm gonna text him that we're, you know, that, uh, when we're ready for him.
Okay, I have a, I'm, I'm entertaining a motion to go into executive session.
Chairman.
Second Chair, we've got an item on the agenda before executive session.
I didn't hear anything. There was two people talking at once.
Lacy, can you verify, um, is executive session next after superintendent's report?
After superintendent's report, it's new business travel, Margot Gray.
Oh, okay. I'm gonna have to board a plane here, um, so I was just hoping you'd get, get that out of the way, but, uh, this is one executive session. I'll wait till new business.
So we, uh, uh, I, I stated a while ago to entertain a motion to go into executive session, and since there's been a request, is, is there a motion to go into executive session?
Well, may I? I'm a little confused. We do have one item on new business for travel, uh, Margot Gray, our Councilmember Gray. Uh, we need to take care of that before we go into executive.
Okay, that's, that's fine with me.
I'd appreciate that. Thank you. Um, the. Okay, um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, the energy, the tribal energy consortium is meeting in, on the, I, I sent the documents to Lacy. I don't know if it's in Govinda. Um, and it gives the agenda what they'll be discussing, and so I was putting in a request to, uh, attend that meeting on behalf of, uh, Osage Minerals Council. We previously passed a resolution, and, um, so that is my, my request. May I?
Question? Entertain a motion for, uh.
May, uh, may I please? I'm sorry to repeat the motion.
Okay, I'll make it in a form of, um, a motion, uh, that I am requesting to attend that energy, the tribal energy consortium meeting in Denver, Colorado. I believe the dates are April twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. And that's my motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second on the floor for travel for Councilwoman Gray. Discussion.
I'm gonna raise my hand. Um, I, uh, we've got the.
Hand raised.
I've, Chairman?
I have my hand raised.
Uh, if I could, I'm.
Whoever, whoever's first, Lacy.
Okay, okay.
Councilman Rebar. Councilman Rebar.
Thank you, Lacy. I'm kind of challenged here, trying to work this on a, on a phone here. Um, so even though I'm requesting it, and, uh, I looked at the budget this morning, and, um, I'm not sure that we have any money left in the travel. And that's what I wanted to ask Lacy. I did want to get it on the floor, because if need be, I will, uh, I guess go on my own dime to represent the minerals council and have our voice heard on building out tribal energy businesses. So, um, Lacy, can you explain, uh, on that C three ninety-five, what's, what's happening there? Because where, I don't think anyone's traveled this, um, outside of, uh, Councilman Redcorn going to Houston. And I believe that there was thirty thousand dollars in that line, I know.
Um, I don't have it in front of me, so I can't tell you exactly what's going on, but I do recall us taking all the money out of travel when we did that last budget line and left a few in there, uh, I mean, a little bit in there, but I don't know right off the top of my head, and it's not in front of me.
Well, maybe I need to modify my motion and, um, um, I, I, I thought we had money in there. So I am going to, um, retract and I will just, um, go on my own and attend, because it's important that we're there. This is, uh, we've been invited as a, a char- a charter energy tribe, and, um, and it's important that we stay involved in all these issues and policy and, uh, everything that's going on with Department of Energy right now and the grants, uh, the funding, so, um, and then maybe we can figure out this budget. So I think what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna table this, and then, um, and, uh, Councilwoman Harland, if you would approve the tabling of it, and then we can move on. But, um, I, I did, I was sitting here going through these.
Lots to be recognized before we move on. Thank you very much.
Councilman Rebar.
Second Chair, may I, uh, have the floor for a moment?
Go ahead, Councilman Rebar.
Yeah, thank you, Second Chair. Uh, I'm not opposed to, uh, uh, the, you know, traveling to an event such as the one briefly described. Uh, I'd like to know something about it. As a council member, I, I haven't seen anything about this event, um, the scheduling of it or, or, or the, the substance of it. However, as a, uh, I, I know that we oftentimes operate under, in a vacuum, uh, but I would, uh, we'd like to think that the whole mineral council should be involved in something so important as this event, uh, that it be brought to all of us, and we could all talk about it, and we could all attend if we so choose to. Thank you very much.
Uh, Councilmember Foreman.
Thank you. Uh, well, Councilmember Rebar took the words out of my mouth. This is the first time I've heard about it. Uh, Councilmember Gray had plans to go, uh, now says, and also stated that she wanted to represent the council. I think that needs to be a full council decision uh, before we go asking for money to, to travel. So, uh, when you ta- uh, when you bring this back, uh, please, before the next meeting, please, uh, provide us with the information you have. And, uh, we, as a council, will discuss, um, you know, what, if, if we need to be represented, you know, how we want to be represented. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. Um, I'm, I've got my hand up, but you can't see me. Um, to answer that question, about a month and a half ago, we passed a resolution for me to be a part of this charter member group. You voted in opposition of it, and we, and I went over the PowerPoint that was there. I submitted for Govinda the agenda and all the information that I received to our office to be uploaded to this, to the Govinda. Um, I did do what, what you're asking. I've already done that, and it didn't happen, so, um, uh, and this event is in, like, in two weeks, so there's just no way to get, uh, the approval. Um, council's already, uh, I've sent a letter to Chairman, and, and you all had received it, uh, when we were, when they were forming this consortium. And, um, you know, Osage is always known as one of the powerful energy tribes. And, uh, I had already discussed it in previous meetings, so it seems like I'm kind of repeating myself. But I've already got table it, so, um, and, uh, it's just important enough that I'll, I'll figure a way to get up there.
This, this is Second Chair Red Eagle. Uh, Councilwoman Gray, is that organization, there used to be a, uh, another organization called CERT.
Yes, sir.
Energy Resource Tribe. I was out in California once when, when, with my brother, and we attended one of those conferences. Is that the same one, or is that a different?
Well, it, it was, um, CERT kind of went dormant after the executive director passed away. And then, um, the tribes by this time started doing, uh, like, pre-affiliated Hickorya, Southernia. They started, go ahead and, um, started, you know, uh, doing their own thing, and, uh, so then, now that the energy is just made history. Come back and ask, since, um, last fall, they wrote a grant and were funded, Hickorya was, to form, uh, to put money back into, but they didn't want to call it CERT. They called it energy, uh, tribal energy consortium of tribes, tribal energy consortium. And so it's reorganized, I'll put it that way, but it's funded.
Okay.
But may I ask one more question?
Councilman Redcorn.
What is the consortium?
Oh, this, I got, uh, I didn't know if y'all heard Lacy acknowledge my hand. If that's all right.
Councilman Redcorn.
Uh, I just want to tell the guys on the phones, if you hit star nine, your hand will race. I didn't know if y'all knew that. So, yeah, if you got my, uh, Mr. Red Eagle, Mrs. Gray, if you hit star nine, your hand will be raised. Thank you.
Councilwoman Foreman.
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to ask Councilmember Gray what the name of this, uh, new group is. Thank you. I just wanted to ask Councilmember Gray what the name of this new group is.
I don't have the documents. I'm working off of my phone right now. I had sent it to Ms. Reynolds, and she has it. And then if she can just send it out to everybody, that would be fine. I scanned it in and sent it to her.
Okay, Lacy, we have to, we have to, have one that, have one that, have one that motion.
She withdrew.
So she withdrew the motion, but didn't make the motion to table.
She withdrew the motion.
Sorry, I kind of muddled it there. Marcia, how do we undo this? Just table it?
I'll withdraw my second, and then you need to make a motion to table.
Okay. So I guess she dropped her second.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, and I make the motion to table.
And I'll second that.
Motion on the floor to table, Councilwoman Gray, travel, seconded by Councilwoman Harland. Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Councilwoman Foreman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Harland?
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Second Chair, Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar? Motion passes.
Thank you, Council. Next on the agenda is executive session. Entertain a motion to go into executive session. Do I hear a second? Second call. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Got a motion to go into executive session, seconded by Councilwoman Foreman, seconded by Councilman Rebar. Any discussion? Here he's done. Call for the vote, Lacy.
Councilwoman Gray? Councilwoman Gray?
Uh, yes.
Councilwoman Harland?
Yes.
Councilman Redcorn?
Yes.
Second Chair, Red Eagle?
Yes.
Councilman Rebar? Councilman Rebar? I'm sorry, Councilman Rebar, did you answer? Councilwoman Foreman?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, we're in executive session. There's.
Hold on, hold on.
Recording stopped.